Okay. It is six o'clock. So, um, we will call the meeting to order with a roll call. Mrs. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Shushler?
Yes.
Mrs. Saharsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Oshie?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker? Yeah. It's nice to see all you guys here in person, heart change. You really do exist. You're not holographic. And glad you're here. Things are doing okay for you then. Awesome. Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Certainly.
Thank you, John and Beth. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda as presented? Thank you very much. Okay, and we are in open session. So, we'll start with, um, the consent agenda. So, I need a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda as presented. Beth?
Second.
And John. Any discussion on those two items? You were given a big binder tonight with the policies. Those of you on the committee, you've got an insert. Because we already had it with a couple of changes. This counts as our first read. So, um, take it, put it on the nightstand, read it before you go to bed. It'll be a really good read.
I had nothing till my time.
Not me. Okay, any other thoughts or discussion about the items on the consent agenda? All in favor of approving those items? Okay, very good. Um, we'll move on then to superintendent reports. Report.
All right. Excuse me, a few items. First off, uh, I'd like to recognize, uh, First Community Bank. Jan, uh, Butler stopped by. And they chose Hillsborough School District. They do like a community impact, uh, award, kind of community service. And Jan submitted our, um, food service program for the work that they've been doing. Taking lunches out during this period of time. And for the area, uh, they've awarded Jan and our community the full $2,000. And so, uh, we took a picture with her and Kim Jackson yesterday. Have accepted that donation. And so, uh, we'll be sending them a thank you and recognizing them and sending that to the, to the newspaper. Um, this evening we'll have our MSBA training, uh, discussion. Making up for the regional meetings that were canceled. And so, we'll do that after the executive back in open session. I listed on here, if you look, um, below in the attachments, please review the board committee assignments. Technically, you'll be voting on that at the next meeting, assigning that. But if you'd like me to make any updates, kind of reviewing that, I've kind of moved Mr. Cruz around on. And some of those, if there's one where we want to have three members versus two. To my knowledge, I didn't know if there was any requirement that there was, there was three. Up, and so, um, if you'd like to be added to one or taken off because there is already two, uh, just let me know and I can... But this is the preliminary based on what was there and just making some adjustments. Um, also, I don't have it listed as a written item, but I want to, I put it there for historical sake is, in the attachments, there's a letter to MSHA and a letter to the state board that was filed from Ed Plus. Uh, Dr. Ziegler sent it. And we are, put our name on the, uh, MSHA letter. Basically, St. Louis area is contesting the MSHA. They've issued a doctrine releasing all, um, sports can start up as soon as school is done. According to MSHA, we can start football practice and they reduce and eliminate all the contact day, um, limitations and such. It's kind of like free rate. Uh, so, I would say it's probably, I'll put it all on St. Louis County schools. But St. Louis County schools have really, uh, that's been frustrating to them from a state competitive balance. Like, we're, we're getting behind competitively, uh, et cetera. We put our name to it to like, hey, why don't you have everybody on a fair table, wait till June 30th? As of Jefferson County, we, the JCAA, all the superintendents voted that our campus is closed to athletic contest facilities, uh, to have that competitive balance. Because we knew if Coach Johnson started basketball practice, Zeb Hammond, DeSoto was going to want it. It's just, uh, do that. So, I don't know if the letter will do anything. It's just, sends it, they wanted to send it to MSHA, so we included it on there. Uh, and then the state, uh, board letter regarding state assessments. In order to plan for next year, when's going to be the testing dates and, uh, what the state's going to, just kind of asking for. Um, some of the things as far as a school year update, and these are some, uh, things that we've been visiting with, with Ed Plus. And this is, uh, kind of a common things that we've been talking about. It's just working collaboratively with the school leaders throughout the region to ensure the safety of our kids, families and staff. And working together, we can utilize that knowledge, uh, of all of our school communities to create the best practices for our district. It's interesting and, oh, I'm not going to read all those to you, but is, in summary, I sat on two, you know, meeting today with superintendents yesterday, the St. Louis area we sat in. It's interesting as we go through for planning for next school year. Because there's so many variables that go into it. Uh, and we rely on Desi and the governor to give us a lot of information and make some decisions. And those are not being made at this point. Near as I could tell, and I think a lot of this is going to get pushed back to local control. We will be making that decision undoubtedly for Hillsborough. Is for the same as a closure. The difficulty in that is, we'll be doing that in the absence right now of a whole lot of information. Uh, transportation budgets and, uh, I've heard today that the budget right now in the state Missouri is $700 million short. So, there's cuts, future cuts that are coming, transportation cuts. You know, how does that look? Um, some districts are talking about not busing within three and a half miles if you have to social distance. If the governor, and I've made several mention on these Zoom meetings and with health department. If the governor says, "We recommend that you social distance," essentially that almost closes school. It's impossible. You know, if that's the expectation of parents of your kids are social distance, how do you do that on a school bus? You could sit kids against the window, but you can't have anyone in front of them. So, you know, I use, the Rain Tree Elementary, probably has 50, 60 kids. That's a five run trip now. How do you do, I mean, logistically with classes? Uh, and so, a lot of unknowns, uh, some of that will be hopefully come and clear around July 1st. But we can't sit and wait as a district until then. And then be like, hey, this is what we're going to do. So, you know, Melissa and I even today, we're talking, uh, about different ideas with, visiting with the superintendents. And of what to do for next year. Some schools are talking, but they talked about starting August 1st. Just to see how much year they could get in before potential closure. But then if they got done, they'd be out in April, uh, trying to making up those materials. I don't know that there'll be a large number of districts in our area doing that. Because time is kind of our friend right now, as far as for planning. Um, in that meeting, I, some of the things that came up, and I was visiting Melissa on this. We're going to have to plan to have a virtual school. I envision, I was just, that at some point, nearly, and I told Melissa, August 1st, she's talked about the ledge. Because it's, we won't have a quality virtual school. But I think what's going to occur after listening to the different groups and kind of picturing this out. There's a lot of our parent, not a lot, I think most of our parents want to send their kids back to school. But we're going to have a certain percentage that don't. And we need to have an option for them. They're just not going to want to go back. Um, if we rely on outside sources, Mizzou, K-12, et cetera, there's a bunch of vendors. Is there's a lot of drawbacks to that. The curriculum is, uh, prepared for you, but if a student isn't successful, then you lose, you know, you lose their ADA. But you're putting out the money. And it's difficult success. Grandview referenced their summer school program is, they had a 48% pass rate. On ones that were teacher-led by Grandview teachers, 98% or upper 90s. So, even in an online platform, if we're using a program, we need to have a Hillsborough teacher following up and dedicated to that. Ideally, I think we would have our own, Desi's given leeway to basically, school districts to create their own online program. And which would be separate than, separately yet the same. I think the key is in presentation to the parent. Can't use Google Classroom on that. It'd be like a, a Hillsborough K-12 and using a Canvas type program or some other program. But it would be taught by educators that work for us, but that may be the only thing they do. They're basically a facilitator of the different classes. They don't necessarily have to be a chemistry teacher. Because Mr. Saharsky's teaching it, there's going to be a video of him. They're making sure that every, you're following through and doing all that. But that's just kind of high level of like, it's almost overwhelming when we talk about what has to be done. But I think long term, there's going to be something similar like that. It's almost going to potentially be the next attendance center that we have, is a virtual type school. I think that'll be important long term for the financial part of the district. Is because I think the COVID situation, this will outlast that for a certain percent, percentage of our population. Getting outside the box is I, I think that at some level, the virtual school has changed it. It's almost, and so, we have to create our own for employment of our own staff. To have those, uh, different things, but also to control the material that a Hillsborough student gets. It's a different format, but it's still the same curricular rigor and all that. So, those are just a lot of different things we've been having conversations about. Ideally, I want to return to school. I think most of our parents want to return to school. They want to return to normal. Uh, that's our focus, but we're going to need some help, uh, from the state. And that's, that socially distancing piece is a huge piece. What we're going to have to communicate with our parents collectively is, we're going to do it with a kid at school. We're going to wash hands. But the expectation is, kindergartners are going to go up, they're going to give each other a hug. And there's going to, it's got to be school. And we can't create that liability issues of, you know, you didn't keep that kid from my kid, et cetera. And the health department realizes that. Today, we had a conversation. They just want us to put plans in place that focusing on what happens when a kid gets, what are you going to do? You shutting down a classroom, you shutting down a building, you shutting down the district? How do we identify if they rode bus, what other families rode on that bus? Quickly so we could disseminate that information. So, it's a lot of different moving pieces. Right now, sitting here on the social distancing piece that we've talked about, I don't recommend, some districts are putting Plexiglas in the offices. And getting PPE for every student. A school, I mean, it's like $600,000 for masks to do that all year long. The putting the protective barriers in an office. Where does it end? If you put it in the office, then you don't care about the teachers, right? Or the other staff. So, then you put it at the teacher's desk. And we're going to get, you don't care about the kids. And ultimately, then you have kids going to high school and like, they're in a little box and they can't move. And high school doesn't have the social appeal, right? If you're not able to leave your classroom and do all these different things. But those are what we're going to have to work out between, uh, now and then. So, I mean, a lot of what it says, a lot about big scenarios. Our focus is to come back. Uh, hopefully that we can. I know that, I feel like in our community, most people want us to come back. But we also have to have things in place for those that don't and variations and put different, uh, things in place. Melissa's got a great plan, working with some teachers and developing some units right now. Because one of the big things that we have prepared for, no matter what, is professional development for our staff to teach in this whole new world. And the level, starting with school year is completely different than what we just came through. We're kind of finishing the race, limping to the finish line to test. We got to make up for lost time and have rigor and hit the ground running and put things in place. So, uh, anything else I need to add to that? Bumps all over, but...
Is Desi recognizing that maybe the curriculum may have to be changed or tweaked? Or because if you have all these people at home, you know, mastering something to happen, like getting rid of the classroom and talk about that too, but...
They haven't said anything?
Of course they have.
No.
They haven't said anything about it. Because they didn't give us any information either till it happened.
Well, that's why they get paid big bucks now. Is...
Well, but that would be, make sense for them to at least start looking, they need to have a plan too, you know? And, well, our plan here, right now, when we're meeting the end of day, is if we are back in school, we're going to take our four quarters and shorten them. Take the first four weeks of school, especially for our younger kids, we're going to have to teach them how to be in school. You know, they're at home right now and if they're, whatever they're doing, mom and dad are trying to work. And I would be guilty of this as well here, just go like, let's go, you know, or do, we're, we're going to have to teach them how to be here. And, um, take those first four weeks and hit those, those key standards that we missed out on. So, we can, my concern though is these kids are more or less being forced to become independent learners.
Sure.
And that's, not every student can do that.
No.
I've got a group of teachers, two per grade level and department and/or department. We're putting together units or chapters, however they want to do it, with some guidelines, videotaping, having that interaction in case we would have to move to a virtual. And then coupling that with what we talked about today, which is more of a long term. You know, putting together a virtual school is going, for instance, launch, came out of Springfield, Missouri. That is their virtual school, Springfield Public Schools. That took them three years. We don't have that kind of time. So, to put together something like a sixth attendance center will take us some time. So, we're trying to bridge that gap with doing what we can do and...
Well, and kids don't, especially younger ages, they're not really great at that.
No.
Comfortable in knowing how to do it.
And even now, I can't get what you're telling me, I don't know. And for a teacher to be able to help them not being there, it's sometimes really harsh. They can't see their screen or what they've done or how to do it.
I have a question. I know our goal is to return to school in the fall. Um, will there be an option for those parents who are uncomfortable with that situation to participate in a virtual school versus being on campus? So, will they work and coincide together? My second part of that question is, if a student were to test positive, obviously there's a quarantine period of roughly 14 days. Would they be able to at that point participate in a virtual environment so they don't fall hot while they're quarantined? I don't know if you can come up with that.
Here's kind of, if they, in order for this to work, and we, I asked that question today to the superintendent, because I was wrapping my up. Is if you as a parent say, "I'm not comfortable with returning my student to this school." Is as a district, that has to be a semester commitment. Is that's a, because we can't play it, I'm in, I'm out, I'm in, I'm out. I don't like it, I'm back here. I feel safe.
It's a commitment for the semester.
Yes, that is, and that's important from a financial standpoint too, as far as staff. Is to, let's say we had a, a virtual program. Right now, it may be the same to, part two of your question. I'm here, I get sick, I'm out. Is, they're still going to be a part of Ms. Euler's classroom. Each of the teachers this year is going to have to have, be building their online catalog. Uh, I think we're going to have to record every lesson. So, you know, each teacher, one of their hours, is we're going to have to figure out a way to get an iPad and literally record their instruction. And that goes in the folder next to that worksheet to build for the future and line up quickly. Because then you're not having to reinvent the wheel because you did it as a part of your normal. But we have to be committed to doing that. Because that situation that you come up is going to come up. Now, let's say this goes on for two years. Is, uh, this is like, well, I was visiting Melissa about, I think there may be a delineation between the virtual school. Because that may be on a Canvas structure or something like that. And Mrs. Euler's class. You won't jump into that type format. You would still stay with your class, but have access to the online learning. And then when you come back. Because there's going to be somewhat different pacing and, because if you jump to an entirely new way of instruction, go do that, so...
I just know that two week quarantine, 14 days.
I think that'll be...
What happens if a kid in Ms. Euler's class does come out?
Would the entire class get quarantined? I mean, it's...
Well, that's...
Yeah.
What if it's a high school kid that's been sent to different classrooms?
Yes, and then all those students, they're back to some virtual material.
A lot of this means that we're going to have to test kids. I mean, we're going to have to have the ability to test them to see if they're COVID positive.
But I, I don't know.
Well, part of that's consent. I mean, you know, you're...
That creates all...
I mean, it's invasive.
I think we're going to need a lot of parents reporting that their kids are sick.
How can you keep people safe if you don't know?
Well, and the kids aren't ever as, let's be clear. If it's zero, zero kids.
You can have the virus and not have the temperature.
Right, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a hell.
Well, and here's the thing that, and we've talked about, and I'm not trying to throw up, this is, is when you take the temperature. Because if they walk in the door and you're taking the temperature as they walk in, and you have a fourth grader, he's got a high temperature. We struggle with that now with the flu.
Well, I mean, and what you do if somebody had meningitis in the school? I mean, it's the same deal, right? I mean, that's highly contagious too.
Send a letter and...
I mean, you send the, you know, you do the things you normally would when there's a contagious disease, I think.
Well, hopefully we get guidance specifically. Uh, you know, we're looking to get thermometers and such. You know, they have...
Like on the forehead?
They have the forehead, but they also have these infrared you want by an iPad. For the 2,500 bucks a piece. And that's one of the things, and that's the question. And that's been my question. Is it safe to go to school or is it?
Right.
Because the reality is, or is learning better if you're here or online? The answer is if you're here. The social distancing and trying to do both halfway, it's not inherently safe.
They're mutually exclusive.
Is...
Well, and then you have courses or groups of classes that you can't really do online, right?
No kidding, like acquired?
Well, yeah. And being that to me, you've got body fluids spit coming out of instruments and you're blowing out into the air and they're all sitting in there, you know? I don't, I don't know how you do that.
Well, you, you do it by just, I mean, it, it's a, it's all risk versus reward. And you got to determine whether you think it's worth the risk for the reward. It's, I mean, it's as simple as that. We can't have perfect quarantine procedures.
Then you have a library. Are we going to really, you know, how are we going to deal with the librarians sitting in the library with no kids coming in?
Well, that's one of the things, way back, I don't know if it's a good idea or a bad idea. I'm going to say it's a bad idea. I don't know if it's, it's an idea. Melissa, we have a lot of talk, so I'm kind of like, I don't know if Melissa's going to be like, behind me, that's a bad idea. Because I was sitting there, I'm like, all right, the what if to? I can tell you that we have 137 teachers, thereabouts, that have first through sixth grade certification. Some of those are process coordinators, some of those are high school teachers. So, do you, you know, in order to social distance and try to get the elementary kids here every day? Because some schools are talking about A days, B days. You know, we're talking about childcare for kids, is, does seven through 12 go entirely virtual? Those teachers come here every day, but John Isaacson's a history teacher, but I, I had an elementary certification. John, you're teaching fifth grade and you're teaching it in the junior high science classroom and you have nine kids. Because you're able then to socially distance. So, you do no bus transportation. You gotta bring your kids here, you can't socially distance there. And you break all of those teachers up, but then Mr. Saharsky in world history, since John came out of history, he's now got 210 kids on his caseload. And he's doing all virtual, but comes here every day. I mean, that's just going to require great flexibility from our teachers. But then to Ms. Walker's question, and I asked Desi this question. When are you going to give us guidance on your requirements? And they're like, well, you can do whatever you want, you know? If they're certified, like, but your standard says I need a librarian. But if seven through 12 is virtual, I need, or Tracy Moses at the intermediate, she needs to teach sixth grade. And we figure out an online book thing and be able to use all, all of our resources in all of our classrooms. Um, I don't like that plan because then your seven through 12, it's great to, for the younger kids, provides daycare for the community. But we're going to have an entire Hillsborough generation, we'll call it, that never went to a high school activity. High, you know, then you have kids taking online classes, are they playing football? Are they doing all those? I think it's just, we need help from, it's either safe or it's not. Either we need to plan for being online, or we need to plan for, hey, we're going to go to school. And we'll address, use health department to give us some guidance on, wash our hands, we're going to check kids as best we can. Uh, if, and address, give us a, like, what happens if a kid gets it? Maybe we're clearing out a classroom. Maybe we're shutting down for five days. And then we got to switch over to the virtual side for five days, but then get them back. Uh, ideally, that's what we would do is start out. I think if we start out, we may get a shutdown, but we may not. I, I worry about testing everyone every day. Because we're going to get kids who are here, parents are already in St. Louis working. And then also, when legal consent is, yeah.
There were some schools that tried to fingerprint kids for lunch lines and they thought, oh, it buries it up. And there was a firestorm about not asking to take my kids fingerprinted.
And publicly, other people seeing at the door, it's not like the flu, like this is a whole different stigma. Is you outed my kid and they're going to be standing in line and they're going to see that Drew Isaacson got taken away and the socially... So, it creates a legal, just...
And no matter what, what we decide, what way we decide to set it up, some people are going to like it and some people don't. You're not going to win, no matter what.
I've heard there are schools in Europe or Asia or something where they give them kids hats. And the hats have like three foot things on them. Why don't they give them clothes, so they don't chew?
That is a new picture as well. So, you know, they've been doing virtually. So how has that gone? I mean, our majority of kids, I know my daughter's experience out of her class, I mean, we're talking, you know.
Well, and that's something we put together in two days.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, and we didn't have, the reason we did what we did is not all of our kids have, um, internet. Internet, not all of our kids have a device to use. That will be solved by beginning of next year, so now we're talking, we're taking grades, now we're talking, you know, a whole different ballgame, but no, participation, I'm sure is.
I, I just want to.
Just talking to my daughter.
Sure.
In talking to my daughter, I mean, she's all about school, but she's, she's got friends, or she knows people that, you know, it's been done since they've.
Sure.
Yes, I'm sure. I can share as a mom and a board member, we struggle my own home, you know, school's very important, but I'm also working an eight hour day from my office, and so having to stop what I'm doing for work to give them direction, or to help them get set up on their device, or troubleshoot anything, and then go back to my job, and then go back, we're struggling, I mean, we're doing math like at six o'clock on a Saturday night, you know, because we just can't do it Monday to Friday to the five, and that's, you know, we're struggling individually, just as our family, and you know, I can't even imagine, you know, what other families are going through, but it's hard. And I know our participation isn't what it should be, you know, we try, but we're still struggling.
One of the things, I mean, obviously that's why we have a school, because it's, it's a lot for parents to work and to do all that. The access is huge, Josh ordered a hundred hotspots at DeSoto, it's twenty bucks a month, it's a twenty-four thousand dollar commitment, it's twenty, we got to contact T-Mobile, is, and they could get more, but that's, we're talking about, you know, he's sending home with all of his kids for the summer. But those are, that opens up a little Pandora's box, because the entire family's going to have access to the hotspot, a district hotspot, and at a house.
Let's be honest.
And so, those type of things, we, we're working to get the Chromebooks, I feel good, if we can get them, because everybody in the United States is not.
It's here.
After, uh, but doing those things, uh, I think we can get there, and that goes to, going back to like the social distancing and buying Plexiglas and PPE, we would much rather spend six hundred thousand dollars on technology and long-term things, or put internet in a home to have more professional development for our teachers. Our teachers are great, but they've never had one, most teachers haven't had a college class on how to be a great teacher that way. They're relationship builders, it's hard to build a relationship with us, or through a Zoom meeting, or to reach out, because we have to, there's so much retraining, is, what we've just done can't happen in the fall. It's got to be a completely different thing, and it's, if we have to be online, so.
Well, and teachers right now are struggling, they're feeling isolated, and they don't know how to do those things, and yeah, just because I can talk to them on the phone or in a Zoom meeting, it's not the same. And that's, that has to be stressful, big time.
And we would plan on bringing the teachers back to here, but that also creates another issue, which, how things work out, when we did the daycare application for first responders, I clicked all the months. So we do have a state certified daycare to be able to fill that gap potentially for employees and such. It's just, you know, all of this, each door you open creates like different things. So as we go through, each meeting will provide different updates, and it may be, quite honestly, something totally from left field, like, where'd you guys, you guys totally abandoned that? But literally, the information evolves and changes, I think July one is going to be a huge date for us. Summer school, if we can do that, is going to be huge. That's one of the things why we moved to doing virtual, because it's a way to pay teachers to then get ahead of the game, start designing your class as practice, so that we're able to work out some of the bugs. It's our preseason, really, if you look at it that way, is, it's a way to kind of work out the kinks, so. And, and that's coming up here, the voting on commencement. One of the thought processes with commencement on July thirty-first, if we can't have commencement, we're probably not having school twenty days later, twenty point six days later. It's a good barometer as to where we're being able to make that call, so. Any other questions or?
Well, can I go back to kind of the MSBA? In June, June nineteenth, do you know, um, they're doing a virtual, I think it's June the nineteenth, a virtual in place of the leadership conference? And there was like a, when I looked at it, it was like a ninety-nine dollar fee to register.
Okay.
And I was just kind of like, I was curious.
Ninety-nine regardless membership?
I don't know, that's what, but it appeared to me that they were taking the leadership conference in June and turning it into a one-day, um, virtual conference.
And there's a delegate thing too.
And there is a delegate voting assembly.
Which is all the, which is a really.
Yeah, it is.
I will do some researching.
Just curious.
Quite honestly, like, I, you know.
Oh, I know it is.
The email slot machine is like, so, MSBA emails have been, quite honestly, ones I'm going through, so I will go through and search.
Well, I was just curious if you were doing.
No, I'm sure I got an email, but probably not open.
Okay, so, we can move on to new business. The first item has to do with the commencement ceremony. So I need a motion to approve a change of venue and date for the twenty-twenty high school commencement ceremony from May nineteenth at Jefferson College to July thirty-first, twenty-twenty, at the Hillsborough Civic Center Outdoor Amphitheater, with the range date or dates of August first and second. Thank you, Beth, and I think it was Angie. Any questions? Okay, all in favor of approving the change for commencement, raise your hand. All right, motion carries, then. The next item has to do with the MOUs, we had our meeting, it was last week. I need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty, two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one teacher MOU between the Hillsborough Arthur School District, the HNEA, and the HCT. I make a motion, thank you, Angie and Renee. Any discussion about the MOU? All right, all in favor of approving that document? Very good. Next one, we need a motion to approve the movement of one experienced staff and eligible movement due to education for eligible employees employed during the nineteen-twenty school year on all district salaries schedules. Thank you, Beth.
Second.
And Angie? Is that right? Any questions or concerns there? Okay, all in favor of approving these new salary schedules? Thank you very much. Okay, this one has to do with classified employee salaries and benefits. So I need a motion to approve the movement of one experienced staff and eligible movement due to education for eligible classified employees during the twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty school year on all district salary schedules and district benefits presented.
All right, second.
Renee and Angie? Any thoughts there? All in favor, raise your hand, then. This one has to do with the extra duty schedule changes. I need a motion to approve the recommended changes to the extra duty schedule and recommendations of the extra, or, and recommendations of the extra duty committee.
I make a motion, second.
Angie and Beth? Any concerns?
I, I don't have any concerns, I mean, if, if this was normal, I'd have zero concerns. If this is not a normal school year, and we don't have a dance team, and we don't have a football team or a basketball team, what happens here, I mean?
Well, that's a different discussion than the salary schedules, is that something that, uh, before, no later than the June twenty-fifth meeting, is, we're going to have to decide, uh, as a district, what we're going to do. One of the things that's, and hopefully I have more information of what other districts are doing, uh, everyone's all over the place on this, is, one, going back to finish my sentence there, one of the challenges we have is we pay coaches throughout the year, which is different than, uh, like when I was at Fox, I got paid after the season. So I got a three thousand dollar check after football. The, the pro to that is, I didn't, I didn't rely on that to make my house pay. If you coached two sports, and they're thirty-five hundred dollars, that's seven grand, I mean, that's six, seven hundred bucks a month, that's a car payment. And some of our staff members are that lean, you know, a lot, that's going to have a huge impact if we slice that. So, right now, I would, my hope is that we have sports. If we don't have sports, I think my hope would be, let's try to look outside the box, and so, I'll use the football staff as an example. All right, Coach Freeman, Coach Anderson, Coach Harskey, you don't have football, boys, and we have kids doing online learning? I need to switch up, I need you to be a coach of them, that's worth a certain amount, or just be creative to them. Maybe the head coach is working with the team and still doing mental health, team building things, even though they can't be together. And then what do you do with the assistants that have value to the district?
So, kind of put a mentoring type program together, John, in lieu of an actual participation type thing?
Yes, is, what, that's, trying to be creative to save, save those positions, but also, if it's, they cut it, and all of a sudden there's more financial cuts, maybe that's, that becomes off the table. I hope not, because I, that worries me for our families, is trying to do that. MSBA, I think I'm their guy, and some that I've read, have said, don't send out extra duty contracts. Don't commit to it, um, because you may, if you don't have a season, that's going to save you money on that. So, we're not sending them out right now, uh, but that's fairly typical, I mean, typically, we'll send extra duty out in the middle of the summer. But I also haven't, this is as public as I've talked about even not having that. I've had people ask me, I'm like, hopefully we have a season, if we don't, I need you to be creative. If people want to, well, I don't want to, I don't want to do that, then that's their choice.
Well, you know, I have, have, do I, I, I'm understanding, I thought I understood, that since we do pay them on a monthly basis, does that apply to their retirement as well?
Yes.
And that's huge.
Yeah, yes.
And, and I, I mean, it would be really devastating for them to not get this.
For sure.
If we don't have athletics, having those coaches do other duties and reach out and have Zoom meetings with their teams for mental health and checking. It, it's not going to hurt our students by any means, right? Under the circumstances, if they're doing virtual school, having that extra touch is just going to keep them engaged and connected, and know that they're supportive. I'm all for paying them, and being creative.
If, yeah, I, I have to, if we can create some kind of like a mentoring program, or, you know, where they actually.
I mean, let's put together an alternative job description for them, under that circumstances.
I know the contract, the teaching contracts have got that, and other duties assigned, or however that wording is.
Right, right.
You know, I don't think any of our coaches would say no, we have to plan for that, and we have to keep that back in our mind, so is there anything in the, in the coaching contract wording to that matter? Or other duties assigned, and if not, could we insert that at this point, for the, just for this year, to kind of cover us?
Could you add that to responsibilities of our activities director, when we hire one, that they can develop a mentorship coach?
This is not just our coaches, but this would be like Stuco and.
Yeah, yeah, any, any.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is, this is everything, and I think it won't be that hard to add that, and I may just do it for the twenty-twenty-one school year specifically, that way, we know to revisit it, so it's not, COVID goes away and five years from now, something's like, I know I have a football game, but you just told me I have to go mentor a kid.
I, I think it's a win-win for our staff, it's a win-win for our students too, you know, having us in place.
Yes, yeah, they're already doing it, and I think.
Yeah, they are.
When I sit and have a conversation with most people, the uncertainty is what freaks people out, if I say, hey, I need you to do this, or like, whatever you need me to do, for the most part. So, we, paying people, we've talked about that as a county, because that's a huge piece for us, it's, we have some coaches make ten grand, and sponsors, and they're the, we also have, you know, staff that aren't coaching, so we need, I don't want to alienate those coaches who are doing it, and then struggle when we come back, so, absolutely. We can definitely add that.
Any other thoughts about these recommendations? Okay, so the motion is to approve the extra duty schedule. All in favor? Okay, motion carries? Yes.
And I know you've approved it, but I do want to, there are some, I'll, I'll call them big changes, so I want to just prepare you as you're going through here. One of the, a couple of the big ones is removal of the community service learning coordinator, which when I was at the junior high one, when I was at the junior high, I actually recommended that, and at the high school they had that. That person did our detention, and so we were able to save our tutoring money, and this paid for detention for us. They have lunch detention, so they're not using that much, this will still be used, and those individuals will still serve in that role, but they're going to be taking upfront into their paycheck thirty-one hundred dollar cut, they will still have access to make the money, but it'll be by clocking in and doing the community service. The other big one is, we're revamping our communications department. Ms. Fresca and from when, the board, and we had the app and the website, if you remember back then, is, we didn't want to get rid of the messenger reporters, because that, uh, so we did not at that time. Is, I visited with the administrators, we had our student committee, is that role has just changed. The messenger reporters, really wasn't a lot to report, because, you know, the principals are doing Facebook or Twitter, and so some of that money wasn't being appropriated, and we weren't getting the most bang for the buck. What we're going to do is, these changes is bumps Janelle up to like a level one, which is like a football coach, and the work that she does, and she's on call essentially twenty-four seven. But also I have two other positions, uh, with activities and then a video type coordinator. two other positions with activities, and then a video type coordinator, and then they will work with Dr. Freeman, kind of coordinating communications, and have a team of four, to have a pretty comprehensive communications department. And it's just kind of recycling that money, and I'm pretty excited about that. So, the only, the JV dance is only if there is a JV dance team, and that gets paid in January, not throughout the year. The team has to make and last until not a, "Hey, we have five girls who are interested in July", and there's two in October, and somebody's, you know, we gotta sustain and grow the program for that. So, that's what, that one there. I just wanted to clarify, because you may get questions about that, as well as the non-staff coaches will be paid after the season because of the issues that we've had with people leaving mid-season, and they're having checks, as we've lost some money this year on that, so.
So, letter F then addresses the junior high dance, includes it from level six to level five, correct? So, I need a motion to approve the recommended change-
I saw you moving kind of that direction with all extra duty, the pay at the end of the season or the end of the sport. Or non. I know not, but I mean, in the future.
Not this year. I've talked about, the only way to accomplish that, I think, would be everyone's grandfathered in, and it would have to be each new position if we go to that.
Okay, so I need a motion then, to approve the recommended change to the extra duty schedule and recommendation of the extra duty committee for item F.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Angie and John. Any more discussion? We've already explained that. Okay, all in favor then? Raise your hand. There's six yeses, all opposed, and any extensions. Okay, thank you.
Hey, Lisa, I just would like to share with the entire board and Dr. Isaacson, that the two committee meetings that we've had in the past two weeks, the meet and confer and the extra duty, in the four years I've been on the board, these were the two best committee meetings I've attended. And I wanted to let Dr. Isaacson know, you led him great. You guys came in with ideas, you had an agenda, the collaboration, and I wanted to just verbally say that on record. I got off both those calls, and you've been told, I think I called Beth or Renee, and I was like, "Oh, my God, this was the best meeting ever."
After your duty.
So, I wanted to make sure you knew how much I appreciated that, because I didn't feel like my time was wasted, and I didn't feel like the committee's time was wasted. It was great collaboration. So, thank you for such a good job.
That's a great team, because it's ready.
Okay, so that concludes our open session for now. I need a motion to recess, open session. Eric and Beth? All in favor of recessing? Okay. We're gonna take a roll call to enter into closed session, and I'll need a motion to recess into executive-
What you need to prepare, or what your district needs to prepare for planning purposes, and what we can do to revise some resources and assistance. We're preparing for a crisis. We don't want to wait for fire, to plan for evacuation. You want to be aware of your emergency routes, you want to practice evacuations, know what to expect. You want to know what you need to do before you need to do it. You want to know who you need to do it, you want to know what you need to do it, when you need to do it, where you need to do it, why you need to do it, and how you plan to do it. We consider that the who, what, when, where, why, and how on planning. There are many expectations currently in regards to emergency operation plans. Parents and families entrust their children to schools with an expectation that the children are provided a safe and healthy learning environment. The community and local emergency services expect cooperation from schools in prevention, response, and recovery. Standardized methods of communication and coordination is also expected. The Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education holds schools accountable for compliance. The MSIP-6 is a state's accountability system for reviewing and governing public school, districts, and services as a mechanism to promote continuous improvement. The school system, in consultation with public safety officials and stakeholders, develops, implements, and reviews annually a comprehensive school emergency operations plan for the school system and each school or site as applicable. The plan broadly addresses safety, crises, and emergency operations. The plan addresses prevention, preparation, operations, and follow-up. It includes consideration of supporting mental health needs of all involved in any crisis. The local board policy requires school system to employ a designated safety coordinator who demonstrates knowledge of all federal, state, and local school violence and prevention programs and resources that are available to students, teachers, and district staff. MSIP-6 includes school safety standards for the school system. In terms of a comprehensive EOP, of coordinate MSIP-6, the school system, in consultation with public safety officials and stakeholders, develops, implements, and reviews annually a comprehensive school emergency operations plan for the school system and each school or site as applicable. The plan must broadly address safety, crises, and emergency operations. The plan must address prevention, preparation, operations, and follow-up. The plan must include consideration of supporting mental health needs of all involved in any crisis. The local board policy requires school system to employ a designated safety coordinator who demonstrates knowledge of all federal, state, and local school violence and prevention programs and resources that are available to students, teachers, and district staff. The school system must annually conduct a physical security site assessment. The school system must ensure emergency preparedness drills are performed in compliance with state statutes and local ordinance. The school system must implement a cyber and privacy security plan utilizing nationally accepted standards. The school system must ensure access to the state of Missouri's School Violence Anonymous Reporting System, which is a tipped line, also known as CURE to Report. All school system staff must participate in relevant school safety and violence prevention training. So, what document includes most elements of the MSIP-6 standards regarding school safety, the emergency operations plan, or otherwise known as the EOP? It addresses listed plan elements. The safety coordinator roles that are included include site assessment, drill schedules are included, an annex covering cybersecurity, and identified roles for training, drills, and education. What are some planning needs? Administration leadership, support efforts to commit to plan development, implementation, and testing and practicing. That leadership might be the board members. It might be a superintendent or principal or assistant principal. We need planning teams. It should include key players from school and representatives from local emergency services. It may be law enforcement, fire, EMS, emergency management. Must evaluate buildings, surrounding community. Customize planning for unique and specific circumstances and resources. You must assess potential threats and hazards. Address safety needs before, during, and after an incident. Must consider access and functional needs. These include disabilities and other needs, diverse backgrounds, and language barriers. Need times and locations. Events may occur any time of the day, any location, including sporting events, field trips, et cetera. You need a plan for any time of the day. Must create, continuously update, or revise an emergency operations plan using a collaborative process. In preparing the plan, you need to identify team members for collaborative team. That team should include key stakeholders, roles, responsibilities before, during, and after an incident. You need to establish common structure. Learn and use common command structure, communication method, and language. Need define and assign roles. Each team member should understand the roles and responsibilities. You need to schedule regular meetings. Planning of an ongoing effort that must include flexibility to reinforce relationships and facilitate collaboration, communication, and coordination. They need to be flexible but regular. Provide flexibility to all stakeholders. The mission of the plan is prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery. Prevention is action taken to prevent a potential threat or actual incident from occurring. Protection is ongoing, are ongoing actions that protect members of the school community and school property from threat or hazard. Mitigation are actions that decrease impact of an event or emergency with intent to produce or eliminate loss or life or property. Response is stabilizing emergency, stabilizing the emergency, establishing safe and secure environment, and saving lives and property, and transition to recovery. And in recovery, restore the learning environment. Part of the planning process, you need to understand the situation. You need to identify potential hazards and threats. You need to assess risks posed by identified hazards and threats. And you work with different types of assessments. There are site assessments, culture and climate assessments, school threat assessments, and capacity assessments. A site assessment examines the safety accessibility and emergency preparedness of buildings and grounds. It increases the understanding of potential impact of those threats, the risk and vulnerabilities presented by those threats, or from your physical school, and your physical accessibility for those that may have accessibility needs. Culture and climate assessment evaluates student and staff connectedness to the school and problem behaviors. It provides knowledge of the students and staff members' perceptions of their safety, problem behaviors that need to be addressed to improve school climate. Another type of assessment is a school threat assessment. It analyzes communication and behaviors to determine if a student, staff member, or other person may pose a threat. It identifies a student, staff, or another who may pose a threat, before a threat develops, and who may need to be referred for services if appropriate. There's a capacity assessment that examines capabilities of students, staff, services, and material resources. It increases understanding of resources available from the school and community, and staff capabilities to support assignment of roles and responsibilities. Another step in the planning process is you need to prioritize potential hazards and threats. You want to use information acquired from assessments and comparing and prioritizing risks posed by hazard threats. Consider multiple factors. There are tools that you can use, and best practices in categorizing the hazard threats as relatively high, medium, or low risk. This is a tool that has been recommended by FEMA and the Department of Education, Rams TA. Another element of the planning process is developing goals and objectives. Goals are broad general statements that indicate desired outcome in response to the identified hazard or threat. To identify what is to be achieved when major activities are complete and defined to successful outcomes. There are at least three goals for each hazard or threat, a goal for before, a goal for during, and a goal for after. You have objectives. There are specific measurable actions necessary to achieve the goals. They often need multiple objectives to achieve a single goal. Use to identify critical functions that apply to more than one hazard or threat. Typically, you have three objectives for each goal. There's a functional element of each emergency operation plan. Functions are activities that apply to one or more hazards or threats. Some examples might be your evacuation functions, or your accounting for all students function. There are at least three goals for each identified function, before, during, and after, as we discussed before. And there are at least three objectives for each goal. You have to identify courses of action. These are intended to accomplish each identified objective. It addresses the who, what, when, where, why, and how, as we discussed before, for each hazard, threat, and function. They're examined to determine if feasible due to available resources. Meaning, are you able to complete these courses of action with the available resources that your school may have in possession, or that your local community may have or be able to offer. They're examined to determine if acceptable by stakeholders. So, can these courses of action be supported by your local community or any of the stakeholders within your school? They include criteria for determining how and when each is possible to be implemented. So, these courses of action provide details in how the school, the staff, and your community members, your partners, may respond to each course of action. In developing the plan, you have different sections. There's a basic plan section. It's an overview of approach to emergency operations. It provides guidance and development, and outlines overall procedures. And the primary audience for this portion of the plan is your school, local emergency officials, and your community. There's also a functional annexes section. This section details the goals, objectives, and courses of action of different functions, as we mentioned before, such as evacuation. There are hazard and threat specific annexes in another section that define specific goals, objectives, and courses of action to address specific types of hazards or threats. An example might be a tornado. The hazard and threat specific annex session will provide specific goals, objectives, and courses of action for responding to a tornado event. In reviewing the plan, you must check for compliance with applicable laws and practicality. Determine the effectiveness and efficiency of the plan. Is it adequate? Does identify and address critical courses of action? Is the plan feasible? Can your school or local community accomplish with the available resources at hand? Is it acceptable? Does it meet the requirements, cost, and time limitations, and is it consistent with the law? Is the plan complete, and is it compliant? You want to approve and share the plan. It should be approved by appropriate leadership and officials. That leadership or those officials might be board members, maybe an administrator. It must be shared with community partners with responsibility in the plan, such as first responders, your office of emergency management. You need to protect and secure the plan. You want to keep the plan secure from those that have no need of seeing the plan, but you also want to share it with those that do have a need. You want to maintain a record of distribution and changes. You want to keep record of any changes that were made and to whom it was distributed. Who is ultimately responsible for approving the plan? Is it the principal? Is it the superintendent? The school board? According to MSBA, the school board governs the school district and serves as a leader and champion for public education in the community. In implementing and maintaining the plan, you should educate all parties regularly. Visit the listed sites, the evacuation sites, reunification sites. Within those functional portions of the operational plan, you're gonna have evacuation sites listed and reunification sites listed. Those should be visited on a regular basis to ensure they are still safe and secure and available. You want to develop quick reference guides, such as flip charts. The flip charts are used by staff and by the first responders as a quick reference guide. You want to post key information, such as evacuation maps. Evacuation maps that are posted within the hallways near all the rooms or within the rooms. And you should educate everyone with the role. All staff, all key players within that emergency operation plan or identify with that plan should understand the expectations of what is expected of them through any situation that is identified within that plan, or those that aren't. Exercise your plan. Practice to ensure effectiveness, capability, and familiarity. Tabletop exercises are a good way to do that. Use a small group discussions. Drills, that's the use of grounds and buildings to practice response to a scenario. Functional exercises become more involved, as they are drills that involve multiple partners and often are system-wide. They may involve the entire district. You have full-scale exercises. Those are drills involving multiple agencies and jurisdictions. It may involve the entire community. You should review and revise and maintain that plan. Use information acquired from exercise in the plan to improve and revise where it's necessary. The plan should be reviewed, revised, and maintained. You want to use information acquired from exercise in the plan to improve and revise where necessary. For each of those drills, the information where you found the plan is lacking, or may where it need to be improved, should be used to revise that plan. Conduct reviews on a regular and reoccurring basis. We recommend you conduct reviews annually, but no less than every two years. And you may review that plan by portions or by sections, as time allows. You want to update and distribute the most current version to all those who need it. We provide some guidance to the Center for Education Safety. We also have, there's also the U.S. Department of Education's readiness and emergency management for schools, technical assistant, also known as Rams TA Center. There's the Department of Homeland Security, FEMA, and local law enforcement agencies, and your local office of emergency management. If you have any questions or comments, or need help or guidance with planning, the development portion of your plan, please contact the Center for Education Safety, or myself, Bud Klosmeyer, and we'll do whatever we can to give you the assistance you need. Thank you.
Okay, we have, we have two, some things to fill out. If you haven't done that, you should be working on that. You should have some questions or relevant information, and we can discuss here for a few minutes. My first question, though, Les, why is this dated eight, 2013?
What was your question?
Why it was dated eight, 2013?
Well, and I was gonna let you know, some of that on the last sheet is outdated. Is this something that I don't, can't say I've ever seen? I think it's pretty awesome.
Stays in the classroom.
Stays in the classroom. But I mean, I love it. I think it's great. Is it something that, you know, is shown to the board, I guess, on our premises? I can't say I've ever seen that.
No, that, the backstory of that is, Jim, I was at the junior high, and we were, I think DeSoto had that.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, and that may have, originally Dan Doo did it, and I think I was in class with him, and we did it. Jim is our safety coordinator.
I remember working on this when I-
Yeah, is kind of putting it together, but we haven't, I wrote that as a weakness of our plan, is just kind of going back and updating some of these items.
It's kind of like our handbook, so it should be updated every year.
It's kind of our handbook. It should be updated every year, presented for approval, because I mean, not everything is.
And I don't know that it.
One of this isn't going to change.
It's for approval.
Turntable is a turntable.
Just discussion, I don't know.
And it, some of it changes depending on the building you're in.
Yes.
Because those plans are going to be different. I mean, a district plan, you know, to contact people and develop things and social media. You know, that's, I don't know how much we talk about that in here.
Well, the reason I said submitted for approval is because every year we look at the handles and we know that changes are made. That's our process to make sure that this is being updated here.
We can give that.
Right.
Just so you have a copy, because it'd be handy, or at least put in the board docs, things of. If somebody contacts you, you can get it. I know they have something.
Yeah, I'm saying Anthony's, it's a different one. I don't know, Mercy's staff.
Well, numbers, phone numbers changed, our websites changed, correct. And I know in each buildings you have specific leaders that are supposed to do things. And if somebody leaves, then you've got a hole in, you know. I mean, I know this was something as a classroom teacher, it was by our door with some other documents. And when you leave the building for a drill or you take your whole class for something emergency, like you take these things with you. And there was, we had something else on the back, that we had red and green sheets to help us identify. Yes, I have all my kids, or red, no, I don't, but I would see that in this one.
You know, and this needs to be said in this, I thought it was really cool that our primary art teacher used her Twitter training um, at Walgreens and.
In the community.
Yes, and like she said in her interview with the tech team, you know, they went back, that, you know, she just kind of went into teacher mode because she assumed she's probably the only one in that situation that had.
Had any.
And she expected to use it with six-year-olds, not with adults.
Well, she said that on the news as well, not just with the tech team, but that was great. And how convenient it was to have a sign in your yard.
Yes, that is true. I was, just happened all that day. Or the day before.
As I was filling, I have like the verification for the entire board house, I was kind of filling that in too. I think strengths as far as emergency plan outside of this, as a district, and Mr. Ramsey is our coordinator, is the training that we've done at Active Shooter. And that, when we first started it, we had buy-in, but I think it was kind of, uh, it's kind of, you know, you know, are we going to need that? Is we also haven't went through and did the in-depth active training, I guess, I don't know if we did it last year. We do it for subs all the way through. We have for several years.
For the emergency.
Well, because they're up there.
Yeah, I mean, if you think about twenty-five teachers a day are substitutes. But unfortunately, we've had, when you think about real-world training, graduation day, the escaping, you know, bomb threats, and all of that has been, fortunately, we've had a little too much on practice on those type of situations. One of the things, I want to hear, our strength is when we went into having two SROs in the evening, and we have great officers now. I can't tell you who, Deputy Forler and our SROs from Hillsborough, the world war training. And we have an amazing relationship with our municipalities, our fire and police, you know, Chief Myberg and Chief Goddais. And even Johnson County, they use our track. We have a lot of good reciprocal items.
And John, a lot of that connection is due to you being in your spot.
Well, we didn't have that.
We didn't have that prior, yeah, in fact, it was, yeah.
It was, it was very.
Complete offense.
Let's just patch you on that.
Well, I'll tell you what. The fourteen.
How often do we, I know like drills and such, there's so many times you have to have them a year. But how often do we include the fire department and first responders or things like that to come in and help participate? Because they can identify things that we wouldn't know to identify possibly.
Firefighters probably would be happy to do something, yeah.
Yeah, and we've had them. I know years ago we did.
Yeah.
But I won't, how often?
I think it's kind of hit and miss, and depending on, the junior highs did it, but Jim was down there. So he'd be like, hey, I want to do this, and, uh, I don't know at the elementary levels, but that's something that.
Well, I know we did ever down then, you know, but have, have things changed? Methods or strategies changed too since two thousand thirteen, you know?
I think the firefighters in particular would be happy to do some.
Well, and now that they're going to be closer campus too, that's better.
One of the things that's, um, on the, I guess you can add on. The, yes. As far as weaknesses and things that can be modified and improved, I wrote out cybersecurity, which that's going to be a game changer, especially as you go to virtual, you know, is, and now, we dealt with that this year, you know? Is the training of staff, I need to begin transitioning program for Jim. You know, he's three or four years out. He's got a background with the juvenile, who is, in my mind, as we're watching that, I'm like, Mr. Jury or someone think, what, or another one of our staff members to take that over as the district person. Medical pandemic issues, one of the biggest changes in my time at Hillsborough is, and hopefully it's going to be better now with kind of a communications team, is as I addressed the board, but one of the most challenging things, go back to the bomb threat. Melissa and I are down there, literally my phone's ringing because Kevin Carberry wants to come. You know, and we're in the middle of it, I'm like, dude, not now, you know? You know, and it's blowing up on Facebook. Is having the ability now to have Kathy will be able to, if it's not at the, I mean, if we're there to, all right, we're taking control of the scene. I need you to start working on a letter. I need you to communicate with Janelle, get on Facebook, because social media, dispelling that is a huge immediate.
Well, and your team is spread out. They're not right in the middle of it.
Yes.
Which is helpful, because in the past, that's what you did. It was those of you that were there, you took care of that.
Yeah.
You're pulled in too many directions at that moment.
So, that's, the communication piece is huge, and it's so hard, because if you're not, not figuring, and then you go this way. Discuss and revise when necessary, and it's, that's something we need to look at, especially as we go into online safety. How are we going to train kids who are potentially being virtual coming in? A kindergartner that's starting in January, but you forget to redo everything because they didn't attend first semester, hypothetically. The other thing is, long-term, is because of our application. High school is the last building with the security front that we need to fix, and just security cameras and PA. Is we have some additional security concerns because of our proximity to the jail. And if, you know, at Casey's, if you go by there in the morning, there's always people that get released about six, seven o'clock in the morning, and they don't have a ride home. We haven't had the issues as much with the M E, we have it all the time where people want to use the phone, so, but.
Well, but that's where the locked door and not being able to get into the rest of the building has helped.
One of the safety seminars I have been to in the last couple of years, they had said that, like, police and fire department, they can access school buildings, and there's a plan that they can access without actually going through the main office, just with a magic, I forgot, key or something. Is that the way this is here too?
Yeah.
I assumed it was.
If you go to any of the buildings, there's a key up in the, the black box, the corner of the box up there. In our.
That anybody could get into?
No.
No.
Is, we have that up there, but I'm pretty confident, being where Hillsborough is, Chief Goddais got it.
Well, I would assume too.
He's got a keychain to get into ours and whatnot, so, yeah.
I assume that is the case.
I just, I just think reviewing it and keeping it updated for us right now is probably our most, should be a big deal.
So, I'll pitch off to Jim to do that.
Give you something to do, do anything.
I'm sure he's thrilled.
He'll be thrilled.
He's always so great at this, and we've done the threat assessment, Dr. Cormen did that, we had spent some money, and it was a look like this of all of our different suits and such, yeah. So is that the discussion, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Are we making motions with your?
Second. You finished your first MSBA.
If you hand in that, I'll fax all those to you.
Okay, all in favor then? You can dismiss once you turn in your papers to John. All in favor to adjourn, raise your hand. Don't forget to, girls are raising your hands, right?
Yes.
Don't forget to turn in your paper to John.